It is seven o'clock and I will call the November 4th, 2019, Scotland County Board of Superior Order, and if you will, cally in your order prayer. Our heavenly Father, we are grateful to you for the opportunity you give us each day to serve you and then to serve our fellow men. We just have to make any decisions we make here tonight, it'll be in the best interest of all the citizens of Scotland County. And just God who directs us and all to be done, and lift us up as we move out of the depths of Scotland County, they say we ask in your holy name, amen. If you will, come with me.
I pledge allegiance to the right of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have a motion to adjourn the agenda.
So moved.
Have a motion, have a second, and a discussion. All in favor, if you know what I'm saying, aye.
Aye.
One at my time. I am the man opening the meeting to public forum, and with anybody that wishes to speak, it reminds you in three minutes' time, the one person I have signed up is Mr. Ray Norman Jr.
Thank you guys for letting me speak tonight. Um, don't really know as far as what's going on with the recreation center in Laurhill, but I do know that I've walked the place and I will note it. Any of you guys have? I do know Mr. Ivey has, um, let his time, spent his time up there and come check it out and looked at it. Um, we get, the gym and the classrooms are being used in Laurhill, guys. I mean, Brian may show you money, the figures on it, but I'm pretty sure that those figures aren't gonna be broken down for what's being used for the gym and what's being used for the classrooms. It's gonna be all the figures together. And I don't think that as far as the figures for everything should be put into account of what we're looking at, guys. Uh, the gym, it's been used by kids, they're charging fifteen dollars a person. I don't know if the figures can come up different for us to be able to save the gym and use it. The classrooms are being used for book exchanges, uh, 4H club, parties, also the gym, it's too. I spoke with, uh, one of the commissioners who said that he understood that the gym was only getting used for some of that. That's not true at all, guys. I live in Laurhill, I drive by that gym every night, every day. Okay, that gym is being used at least four or five times a week. Also the classrooms is what? Um, so I don't really know as far as what you guys have planned for, but I did, did wanna come and speak on behalf of Laurhill. A lot of people in Laurhill love that gym and the classrooms, guys. I understand the auditorium is, uh, it's, it's pretty bad, um, and we've been, it probably could be dealt with, but the, the gym I know is being used by kids, guys, kids. Okay, I mean, I don't, I don't know what else to say about that other than that's one of only gyms in the county that park recreation is using right now. And I know for a fact because I coached little league basketball in that gym last year, and there was a lot of kids and a lot of parents were in that gym. I don't know how much it would cost to fix it or whatever you need to do, um, to repair it, but in, in my personal opinion, it was fine. We, we used it last year. Is heat there in the gym? Unlike weight room, um, you know, my son spent camp with park recreation at weight room last this summer and it was hot in there, guys. So I don't know as far as what, what they gonna do as far as changing everything up, but I do know for a fact that gym's being used. The classrooms are being used. I would encourage every one of you guys to come out there and look at it and just, just, just see for yourself what, if this were safe, in my opinion, okay? A lot of people in Laurhill's here, a lot of people signed petitions, it's, it's worth saving, guys. Um, the auditorium is in bad shape. Um, I've looked at it, I've walked through it, it's, it's bad. Um, but I, I do know that Brian's probably gonna present you with some numbers, okay? And I do know, I don't know for a fact, but I'm pretty sure those numbers gonna be all everything together, as far as maintenance and up costs and electricity bills. And I think probably it should be separated out to actually see what the cost is to use the gym. If there's any numbers we can change of, as a business standpoint for park recreation in the county, to maybe charge a dollar for a parent, you know, watch a basketball game because sixty, seventy kids playing every, every Saturday. Okay, guys, there's a lot of parents coming here. I don't know. Uh, but I do know that, that the money could be raised or charged to be able to upkeep the gym. We're charging fifteen dollars a kid right now for basketball. I mean, I'm sure he's gonna have forty hundred, two hundred kids probably, indoor soccer, volleyball, parties in there. Went to a birthday party a month ago for my nephew in there. So the gym is getting used, guys. Um, and that's all I ask. Um, I know I'm over three minutes, but I just would ask for you guys to come out there and look at it and walk it. Tim, I appreciate you coming out there looking and, um, actually hands-on, that, that means a lot. Um, and I would encourage everybody else to as well. And that's pretty much it, guys. Any questions?
Any questions that...
Other than say we have an aye on the agenda tonight.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you, sir. Good job.
My name's Charlotte Coleman-Johns. I was born and raised in Laurhill. I have lived there all my life. I now live in San Fernando. I've been an hour to get here to tell you guys, considering tearing that gym down, those classrooms down, it's, it's a horrible thing for you to even consider. Is it worth it to you that these kids who are playing in the gym and in the classrooms and doing the outreach in that community, is it worth it to you for those kids to go out on the street and do drugs? It's gonna be on your hands if you don't provide something for these kids to do in Laurhill. They shouldn't have to come to Laurinburg to do something when they have a gym right there. They have basketball right there. They had a tennis court right there. That is our community center. I come back on a monthly basis to visit my hometown and I'm proud of it, as well as all these other people. I think you really need to consider, and I beg of you to consider, what you're doing to Laurhill. And don't think of it as a poor old mill village, because we're not. We're a thriving community. They are a thriving community. And it's worth it. It's worth it to save the children in the community. It's worth it for these kids not be on drugs and sitting idle waiting to be thrown to jail because they can't find anything to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Not bear shit. No.
Okay, good. Anyone else here? I will, I will.
Thanks, Mr. Davis. Um, I wouldn't plan on sharing anything, but my name's Kyle Wyethoff. I'm the pastor at Laurhill Baptist Church. And, uh, occasionally I rent the gym and it's been very useful for our, our church of young people. Um, my sons, uh, my kids play in the gym on Sunday afternoons and there's usually at least fifty or sixty kids, I bet kids playing as well. Um, you know, we, I know the gym's being used, just like, um, just like was already said, um, and I think it'd be, it'd be a very difficult thing for that to be torn down, um, just because it does represent, um, something that is taking place, um, for kids to be able to, to have a place to play. So I would, uh, I mean, when I heard that it was being torn down, it was really a, um, I know it's a tough situation, but at the same time, um, it's very important in our community. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? If not, then I will approve the voting for him. I need a vote to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
I have a motion, be a second.
Aye.
Have a second, and a discussion. All in favor, if you know what I'm saying, aye.
Aye.
One at my time.
Questions I want to report tonight that the county received a thirty-five thousand dollar grant for hotspots for students and people in county who do not have internet access at home. Uh, we have the units that are available to be checked out from the library. All you need is a library card and we need your social security number. But as a result of the school having programs for every student, middle, through high school, we are providing hotspots for them to use so that they don't have internet access at home. They can come to the library, get their hotspot, check it out for twenty-nine days and have internet access at home. Okay? Uh, the report on the board is a synopsis of one that I gave the county manager, which says, in essence, we had a number of transactions last year. The value of the transactions were nine hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars. And if you look at the library budget, the return on investment was two dollars and seventeen cents for every dollar of tax money I received for operating costs. Uh, that goes for buying DVD's, audiobooks, books, electronic databases, subscriptions, ebooks for people in the county. So by need, by those resources, resources for citizens of the county, the return on investment, as I said, was two dollars and seventeen cents per dollar of tax on the revenue. Any questions?
To the board in the town, any questions they want to ask? Thank you, Leon.
This is a, uh, a synopsis of where we ended up with fiscal year 2019. We brought in, uh, total revenues, uh, but, uh, actual of forty-one million, which was ninety-five percent of our budget, which was, uh, forty-three million. Our expenditures, uh, were forty-one point two million, which was ninety-six percent of our budget. So our revenues under expenditures for fiscal year nineteen was a hundred and thirty-three thousand. By looking at the general fund balance, um, as of June thirty, two thousand and eighteen, we had a twenty-two million. Considering our revenues and expenditures, uh, of forty-one million, our fund balance as of, uh, June thirty was, uh, twenty-two point two billion, which is around twenty-five percent.
One thing, I put this, I just put this information in together. Uh, this is just pulled from the fi- uh, financial summary that she's done, uh, because this is the first year in several years that we have not added to fund balance. Uh, but in last year's budget, we had, uh, six hundred thousand dollars of appropriated fund balance, uh, of which we used a hundred and thirty-three thousand. Uh, and those were primarily, uh, ca- and capital items and additional allocations because of hurricane, uh, damage and activations that we had to deal with that we knew we were not going to get reimbursed in last fiscal. So I showed, we have, we planned to use fund balance and we use, we just did not use as much as we had.
Fund balance requirement is, well, I noticed eight, four minutes we have here. What is it, eight and sixteen?
Eight, eight percent is what the local government commission recommends, but for a county of our size, twenty-four percent is what they're actually recommending for us. Eight percent is the minimum.
They recommend twenty-four.
For a county of our size.
I said eighteen. That's the local policy.
Local policy, yeah. That's, that's the policy that we said, the, uh, local, local commission, if you got there at least eight, but, like, they have said they recommend twenty-four.
And just as a reminder, we've been close to eight of years past. This is not a place to wait.
Any questions, Dale? Or any of the numbers you're saying, please? Thank you, Dale. At this time, on the agenda is the, uh, to continue the discussion of Laurhill Community Center. I think all of us, I believe, I know I've looked at it many times, and I know it's being used, I don't know exactly how much, uh, we talked about, I think about Brian, that it was not used a whole lot by children. Uh, Brian, are you, are you still here?
Yeah, I'm here. So back when we had your staff retreat, or your commissioner retreat, I reported that the community center was used programming by our department for youth basketball, indoor soccer. This year we use it for indoor volleyball. And we run a, a Sunday program for open gym. All right? So I've reported all the information that you guys have asked of me. I didn't say it wasn't used much by youth or by any particular audience. All I've done was report financial information and the current programs that we run, including the 4H club that uses the facility in the summer. So, you know, just to be clear, um...
Okay. So I just wanna repeat what I, I said. Um, during the commissioner's retreat, I reported information from Parks and Recreation about the Laurhill Community Center, about the programs that we currently run at the community center, um, our youth basketball program, indoor soccer program. This year we ran a volleyball program at the center as well. And I haven't said one time that this facility is not used by youth or anyone. Um, and I can go on record by saying that you guys asked me questions in the commissioner's retreat and I give financial information as you ask the week. Not one time have I said tear it down or keep it up. That's not my thought.
That's not, that's not what I'm saying, Brian. I'm not, I'm saying that. I think it was, I would do it if it was limited amount of children or youth that was used. And if it opened on Sunday, it would be used actually.
So our Sunday program was a youth, a youth and adult free play. So both have the opportunity to play on Sundays. And we average, uh, based off the numbers that I've had in the past few weeks, and I get a sign issue every week on that, we average anywhere from ten to twenty adult same kids on Sundays.
I would reply, if you're a kid or a child.
No, 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 I didn't say that. I just wanted to clear the air that, you know, I'm, I'm not, you know, vouching for anything. I'm just providing information for you guys, you know, to see.
Aren't part of you saying that there's ten to twenty participants on Sunday?
Yeah, that's about an average. I mean, sometimes you have six or seven, sometimes you might have twenty-five, you know, your average. And that's adult fans, you know, they play it two separate times.
Well, if you know this, if these, these other kids that are playing for the, the church that uses it, is that funneled through Parks and Rec?
Or if you have the opportunity to rent it out as well, you know, that's outside of the free play opportunity, so, you know, they could be using it at different times and it could be larger audiences. I'm just talking about programming, um, from a park recreation perspective. Now, I'm not talking about rentals, you know, and, and, you know, what a private individual does to bring in, you know, the center.
But, but is, does that have to go through you to gain access?
Right. They, if someone wants to rent the facility, they pay one dollars an hour for a classroom and thirty dollars an hour for the gym usage. People can host a birthday party or, um, a private event out there at the center as well. And we, we usually, we, we average around two thousand dollars, um, of revenue generated annually through private parks. And that includes the shelter as well. So around two thousand dollars, maybe three thousand dollars, somewhere in that, uh, number range. And that doesn't include youth basketball, because obviously that goes to athletic coaches and to Laurhill Community Center revenue, but we do use the facility for youth basketball as well.
And how many times a week will they be in that gym practicing?
Yeah, they, they practice, they practice Monday through Thursday, they play games on Saturdays.
Any kind of activity going in that show, school show or...
Not a show.
Not weekends and shows?
Um, but we, we do play some of the way as well. Not as much, um, we don't practice there as much as Laurhill. Um, we also use Sycamore Lane and I E J. I E J was used this year, wasn't used last year because of the damage. But with, with us just adding indoor soccer, um, that's usually in, in weight room or Laurhill. So those facilities are, are pretty much used for, you know, indoor sports. But we, we have, you know, a bit of usage throughout the schools of Laurhill and the weight room. And that, that program starts in December and runs until the first one morning.
Brian, if the gym disappeared, if you got up in the morning and it wasn't there, how would you go forth to have all the activities you've just described in Laurhill? What, what, how would you, how would you replace it? How would we manage that?
Oh, and obviously something like that, you know, safer for the community is harder to replace, um, but, you know, you have to use local schools. You have to depend on our relationship with the school system to utilize their facilities.
Would that cost money to use the school system if you were to use basketball stuff? Would that join?
No, we, we used Laurhill earlier this year to invade and then the school system.
But the general community can't just walk into a school like...
Or rent it?
No.
Yeah, I'm not sure. I'm not sure the school system policies, so I can't answer that question.
There's two gyms in Laurhill. There's one in Laurhill and there's one in Oak Harbor, and then there's one down at Oak Harbor. So, um, I'm not proposing that that's what we do, and I am just, maybe the facilities in Laurhill are not being fully utilized to serve the kids that want to have basketball.
Yeah, we can't hear you at all.
Where did you say, General?
Well, this is owned by a church, equipment. Not so.
I'm just gonna go to what I originally, what I was asking here.
Can you guys put your microphones close, because we can't hear you guys at all?
I'm terrified anybody said anything. Anyway, so what I, you know, I did go out there, as, as Billy said, and, and, and look at it, because I, you know, honestly, I haven't been out there since I played church basketball, student practice in the late sixties, literally eighty, so you can imagine it's been a couple of years. So with that said, um, you know, the asbestos debate is going on out there right now, and, um, that's gotta be done regardless of what people do. Uh, the, the big problem now, the gym did not leave before, but they were taking that big window out, just kinda like that window there along the top of the gym, and it leaked because that night it rained and I went in and had a little bit through that. I asked the guy, hey, can you seal that up a little bit better with plastic? Just a little, whatever. The auditory gym, if you're not gonna, that's, it's still, you're gonna have to, it's gotta come down or it's gonna be bad. But, and I didn't realize this until I looked at it, there's, there's exterior walls, they're connected, but the windows, they were all built separately, so you can tear that auditory down and leave that exterior wall that was originally there and leave that building section in the gym there and I'll retract it up to that window. But I guess what I wanted to put it back on here tonight, or is just to say, maybe we can slow our roll here a little bit and all this while we're together to look at it and, and see what is working, what isn't working, what would have to be done, so we know what we're looking at rather than, oh, you know.
Did Mr. Chairman tear it down?
Um, in October, when I voted tear it down, I made that vote based on the information that was presented to me, that it was being used just a few times a year. I own, not that, that mean as, um, Ted, Ted said it was being used, uh, other folk, but when I made that decision, these folk weren't there to speak. Certainly, I am from Laurhill and I was in and out of that gym back in the sixties and you, so I don't have to go and check it out. I'm from Laurhill and I represent the people of Laurhill. I represent the district, Laurhill Township District, and of course, everybody else, but I'm harsher to Laurhill. Maybe you'll, you'll take about that. But to ask our citizens to go to a church and use their gym and tear down, activate the gym, I'm not, I don't think that'd work. I don't think we'll withstand that. And I would like to ask the commissioners to disperse our decision, tell that demolition company, don't tear up the building, take it down that wall. It won't cause us to go have a little backup. We don't need to ask those kids to go somewhere else, because parents can't get off work and take kids to Laurinburg somewhere else. And that's not necessary. So I'm going to reverse my vote and ask my colleagues, please, let's read the gym, face it, because we represent the people, not ourselves. We're here for you. Thank you.
Anybody else? That happens, this is all both sides, uh, maybe the attendants are guessing whether we go up there or not, we can get some numbers together and see how feasible it would be to leave, sell a classroom and tear down the old auditorium. We'll get from everybody standing on, you know, see what it would take to, uh, get the gym back like it already and move forward.
Well, hon- honestly, I think if, if you did what I'm saying, you take the auditorium out and fix it when the gym doesn't really need anything, so, I mean, it, it can just leave until the weather will take it, you know, whatever that means.
when I made that decision, these folk weren't there to speak. Certainly, I am from Laurel Hill, and I was in and out of that gym back in the sixties and years, so, I don't have to go and check it out, I'm from Laurel Hill, and I represent the people of Laurel Hill, I represent the district, Laurel Hill Township District, and of course, everybody else, but, I'm harsh to Laurel Hill, may go, you can take about that, but, to ask our citizens to go to a church and use their gym, and tear down Act 80 Gym, I'm not, I don't think that'd work, I don't think we'll stand for that, and I would like to ask the commissioners to disperse our decision, tell that demolition company, don't tear up the building, take down that wall, it won't cause us to go have a little backup, we don't need to ask those kids to go somewhere else, those parents can't get off work, take kids to longer, somewhere else, and that's not necessary, so I'm going to reverse my vote, and ask my colleagues, please, let's read the gym, face it, because we represent the people, not ourselves, we're here for you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
That happens, this is all both sides, uh, maybe the kids are guessing whether we go up there or not, we can get some numbers together, and see how feasible it would be to leave, the classrooms, and tear down the old auditorium, we can, everybody standing on, and see what it would take to, uh, get the gym back like it already is, move forward.
Well, hon- honestly, I think if, if you did what I'm saying, to take auditorium out, and fix those windows, gym doesn't really need anything, so, I mean, it, it, it didn't leave until the weather would take it, you know, whatever.
The classroom back before Congress, there being you, uh, uh, I'll throw that out there.
How much is, how much is classroom being used?
The classrooms are being used by, one of them, the book exchange, we have a library in there, people go in.
One of the classrooms is an actual feeding site for senior citizens, it is five days a week.
Five days a week?
That classroom is not in that building anymore.
Some has been removed from that building.
And I know they were holding in there too, that one precinct, so I don't know if they were gonna plan on moving that back or.
That's the other building, that's another isolated.
No, I voted in that, in the classroom, they moved it, they voted in that classroom.
I'm in the center.
Yes, they moved the decisions, they moved that.
I can't remember why they moved it up there.
Yeah, I don't know why, but, yeah, but I know one of the rooms are a book exchange.
No, but that's permanent, they bought it there, they did that.
Four H M's there.
We don't have any place to game by tearing it down.
If that's the real sound board, we will look at it.
Do you need another?
Yeah.
I'd like, I'd like to request that somebody get this board, the exact amount of activity that's going on in there, I don't want to make a decision based on information that's the wrongies, um, I mean, I heard tonight fifty-six kids playing basketball, but I had heard a month ago, eight or ten, so I, I don't like to have solid facts when I'm making a vote, I think the gym has value, but I would like to know what's going on in the center part of the center, and what are those classrooms being used on, and how often, and how many people, so if somebody could gather that information and get it to us, I would really appreciate it.
I, I can give you the, I can give you the actual facts of the gym, because I'm in the gym, um, I do know, as far as with basketball, um, just this past year, and with indoor soccer, how much we used it.
I'm not about the gym, I'm talking about the center classroom.
Okay.
Yeah, just the center classroom, I know the gym's being used, uh.
By way more than fifty or sixty years, a lot?
That is a lot, I agree.
No, more than that.
Due to the instructions of that, of the, uh, of the, of what the hurricane did in the county, the Ford Club have been using one of those classrooms for storage room for their period, the other one is a book exchange room, the other one is the room.
What I'm asking for is to, let's just look at your hour pass, from lines, anywhere else you can get numbers, or real estate, and go from there and do work on, that's, that's the only time I ask you.
I'll make that note.
Yeah, and, and, well, I, I feel a lot of people on that, you, you, they add to that, I mean, I was just gonna put in there that it's gonna be postponed.
Right, yeah, I would, I would.
Right.
That's what I was.
But continue to ask best, that's what I was.
I'll rephrase the motion, that we continue and complete the asbestos statement, stop the project at that point, gather all pertinent information, data that we need to make the decision, make sure that's accurate. You have the next.
I'll say.
I have a question, I have a second, that we should continue with the evaluation, and once that's done, we stop everything, and then we get together the numbers that, uh, that are realistic, both the gym, and classrooms, and whatever else, you go from there.
Is that, that's the move.
I have a motion, I have a second, I want to favor, if you know, say aye.
Aye.
Other than aye.
And I would say, to Billy Ray, I, I would like the information that she, that she wanted, she would try and give us, as far as the use of the gym.
Yeah, I can show you real quick. Okay, I mean, I have a picture of all the kids in the gym, that, um, actually, uh, and I don't know as far as how part of recreation and the county works together with that particular, and how that works, but I do know that I coach, do sports, football, baseball, soccer, basketball, I coach them all, and I know how many kids use that gym during the week, so I know it was brought to you guys' attention that it was only being used on Sunday, whoa, that ain't right, you know, I know for a fact, because I'm in there, and, um, so I can, I can tell you how many kids are in that gym Monday through Friday, games on Saturday, so I know that the gym is being used a lot, now, with, with Ms., Ms., uh, McCollough, as far as the classroom stuff, I don't know too much about that, but I do know they're not in bad shape, um, um, but like Mr. Ivey said, auditorium is in bad shape, um, but, um, as far as that, maybe we can get that information for you as far as the classroom.
Billy Ray, if you will, before you leave, if you would give first, or the numbers for the gym, and then you can put it together, and give us all the, so we all have the main numbers, if you agree with that. Okay, all right. Next, only agenda, the two, uh, time before your resolution.
Well, I don't, he did it, 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 you know, that grapple that I did, but I, that's not what he, he was doing, he was, he was, he was going on.
Chairman, a number to the board, I think the resolution in front of the speakers, can you hear? I think the resolution that the board has run on the speakers, so, uh, was our past, at the last meeting, with preparing a resolution concerning school funding and possible board action, and, and really having the opportunity to, at a long, a long walk, I remember lying about it from nineteen sixty-three, and I was in county, certainly nineteen sixty-three, but, um, as of nineteen seventy-six, I was, I have a large, large file about this particular issue, the, this board is not the first board to address this matter, um, not the first board to seek rest for this matter, um, and the resolution sets out, um, not in great detail, but, um, sets out in summary form, what occurred, uh, over the years with school funding here, all the way back to nineteen sixty-three with the original act, to a modification that occurred in two thousand and two, it also refers to the study that was brought to the board, um, mediation that occurred in two thousand and fourteen, and probably most recently, the, um, cooperative effort of this board and the Board of Education through the liaison committee, so, that is the background for the resolution, and, uh, the, the board can say what is requested in the resolution, should be, uh, due to facts, if I have any questions, if I have.
Any questions, Mr. Johnson? The only, maybe comment I would make, there was a, there was an additional item, I think, that was put into this one, that was not in the, the original, we talked about, month bill, in regard to the two thousand and eleven study, was that, was that part of the resolution of month bill?
It was not, but I believe.
I just had to report here, I did, it wasn't in that resolution, but I don't worry about it.
Well, I, I, I'm, 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 I'm pretty familiar with that report, I studied it a whole lot, board act, about six, seven years ago, and I have, excuse me, so this is, um, and I, I believe it was written by someone from here, who was a, a, a student, and probably their public administration program, I don't know that it was handed by the school government, institute government, and I don't, I, I'm going to allow, and it has ordered, the reason that we're doing this. I'm a little, I'm a little, I'm a.
Well, and, and I, I'll, I'll reiterate, just what I said last time, to everybody here and watching, that they read it, play their own minutes, is that, us doing this, I want to leave the expectation that this actually passed as a statement, because it's gotta go through both houses, the state and the governor, for it to be done, and, and you've gotta have it proposed, or you can, you can vote it on there, so I want to leave that, you know, if this, if we vote for this resolution, and I think it's a hundred percent guarantee or any guarantee that it happens at all, it's just gotta go through a lot of levels for that.
When Senator First in office, he told this board, he told school board, not even going to attempt to take to legislation, not let, let the board agree on both, and, you know, even if we want to do a march, school board, they don't want to give a ten million dollar, they don't, they don't, they don't.
But, but, I'm believing, I'm not advocating at all that they give a ten million dollar at all, I'm not saying anything about, telling you anything.
In law, I mean, in studies, that legislator, legislator say, just talk to the representative, not our representative, or representative say that, he might, but, no representative is going to go over another representative, go in his, their territory, trying to pass a proposed issue, you know, you know, I wouldn't do that, with somebody trying to impose something.
Yeah, well, that's why, that's what I said, there's no guarantee that this, that he voted right here, so, um, but I, I don't, I don't personally think that we let that sway us from what we're, and we're gonna, we do what we're doing, and everything else is up to other.
What's opposed to the board?
Yeah, it is up to other people, you know.
What's opposed to the board?
I, I do not know that clearly.
Well, I, believe me, I, I'm not gonna pretend to speak for this board, I'm certainly not gonna speak for that, um, I do, I do have a little different slam on it, and if it's appropriate, to, 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 to voice it at this point. We have come a long way in the last five or six years, and I think you, you commented on that, when you talked about the liaison committee, and the no longer need to have the funding formula, because we basically negotiated what we paid, uh, or allocated for the school funding, uh, in each of the last, really, six years, but particularly the, the last five, including the one that we're in now, we've gone from over ten million, eight million, to just slightly over ten million, um, I think we've got a really good working relationship between the two boards, in the body of a smaller committee called the Liaison Committee, um, we've had some, uh, the conversations have not always been easy, and certainly not always been agreed upon, but we've been able to convince them that the amount of money that we fund the schools is, we're trying to hit a happy medium in what the schools need, and what the county can afford, because we are, as, we don't have to convince anybody, um, a county that has great many needs, and not a lot of, not a lot of resources in which to meet those needs, um, I feel like, since we, if we have had some conversation, answered to Commissioner McFatner's question, in the last three months, through the liaison committee, we've, we've had some conversations with the school board members on the liaison committee, and hopefully they can take back to their group, uh, we don't have an idea whether they have or not, uh, that we do think it's time to consider getting rid of the funding formula, and hopefully, it's, I, my sense is, there's a better chance of getting removed, if the two boards can work together and make a joint request, and I guess I have some fear that us independently taking an action would reduce the cooperative nature of the school board, and that's, that's, I'm probably one of those who's been on the liaison committee, for the most part, since it was created, so I feel some, um, allegiance to that committee, and the work that it's done, and I promise you, if, if we could get rid of the funding formula right now, I don't know that it would actually change the way that we've done business like we have the last five years, and I think that will continue, and they know that our goal is to continue to go down, we believe that we still need to be going in a, in a, in a direction that reduces the amount of money that, that is paid to the school system, so I'm, I have a, I'm, I'm torn a little bit with the resolution, kind of dishonest, I didn't say that.
Well, even so, even so, when, uh, fully, full was the liaison committee, every commissioner, uh, every commissioner that rang, that's one of the topics, that they say they want to fight to abolish, everybody, that's everybody too, I'm gonna fight to abolish, and that's where some of you got more than they should, because this, they just made a statement, I'm gonna, I'm gonna help try to, you know, abolish, every commissioner, and everybody, every citizen wants to, you know, like I say, some of them afraid of, about this, of not getting relocated, but you're gonna be strong about it, both, both, both your convictions, everybody, I, I wanna see it abolished, because I'm tired of the high taxes, but like I said, um, that money comes from, you know, all the governments, to Scotland County, and we're supposed to be good schools of the money, but, but our budget's going to schools, but like, we wanna have our kids have the same opportunity that other schools, other, uh, school system can, but we're not being with schools four, like I said, I don't, I would love to see the school board and county commissioner agreeing, but that's about, but I don't see that in the forecast, everybody's been running, and we just, maybe they'll choose you on the board, but, once you be on the board, you'll see, you'll see, it's not a formula, nobody wants to agree with, I, I showed them, I got a child in the system, I don't wanna see, I want her to have the same thing everybody, every kid in Scotland County, I wanna have an opportunity, better schools, you know, but, but when it comes to that school floor, when it was created, yes, everybody wants, but now, nobody wants, you know.
I don't know what year, um, the board of commissioners, I just got some, um, and, um, quite a few members of the board of commissioners went to ride, did you all refer to, to request a, a, a conversation with the legislator, and they were embarrassed, they wouldn't talk to about school, you know, but that was years ago, you know, but, uh, but as quite a few efforts have been made, through the years, to, uh, you know, eliminate that funding, and, um, well, is the right time right now, I'm not, I don't.
Mr. Johnson, I just wanna make sure we understand that I'm not saying eliminate that funding at all, I'm not saying cut it, I'm not saying anything like that, so.
Just give a little background of how.
I understand, I understand, it was just when you said eliminate, I, we don't want to eliminate it at all, and, and, and we already know there's a risk of, even cutting it, is, is at risk, if you cut too much, or whatever, so, I'm not advocating for that at all, in way, shape, or form, um, I just think it's time, because we don't need the, the big brother to stay and hold our hand anymore, and I do not, um, I, maybe not wrong, but I don't think we're gonna get that resolution out of the school, but, um, so I, I think we, we have to act as we act, and, and do what we can do without any other, um, action or whatever, from the outside, but, but, you know, because, I would be the first one to say, this is probably not going very far, but, everybody in this county, everybody in this city, every representative, to know where this board stands on this topic, and, and that, that's probably the bigger message to send, than actually getting action done tomorrow, to get this through it, because I'm a realist, I know that's not gonna happen, and, um, but, but I think that, that puts the message out, that where this board stands on this topic, right now.
Now, Tim, what about liaison committee, school board and the county, we send a message to them that, no matter what you say, we, we don't wanna hear it, that was, that was this resolution to say.
Well, uh, I, because I would be the first to say, I think we're actually required that the liaison remained intact, and it would just, I'm not saying.
That's why I said, I think they're doing a good job, but, you, you send a message back to them, and what you mean, what you mean, we feel the same way.
Yeah.
I mean, you understand, yeah. That's where I, that's where I feel when I was reading this resolution. I said, well, I thought we were gaining ground, closing the gap. Maybe, no, just, every now and then we make those sucker bunch to the school boards that they, that we feel. And that you know, we still control the county money. You're not controlling us, you control our own money. We're just late as stewards of this money. So we're going to send a punch every now and then that you know, forget it.
We have to get it. It's going to recall.
I'm making sure I can be heard. What we're doing now, so the liaison committee, that's really what I have. It is. What's the process? We're going to talk about outcome, and I think that's important. And the process that we're using is that we're not using the main thing. We're doing what, I don't know, three fourths of the counties in North Carolina do. They have their own interlocual agreement on how they fund education. And it's agreed upon by the commissioner and the school board. And that's what I requested of this board of commissioners nineteen years ago. And it took fourteen years for it to happen. But I stood before the board and said, I'd like for the commissioners and the school board to come together and develop a way to determine usually how we fund the education. That didn't happen in two thousand, but it didn't happen in two thousand and fourteen. That's what we lost the mediation, which was historic. Because this board said, we can't fund the schools at the man and end amount. And we went to mediation, we've had a liaison committee for five years. But it's been very successful, and we're in the process of negotiating another two-year funding agreement. But I hope that we can agree on, I'm not sure that we will, with this preemptive resolution. So I don't want to risk the damage, to damage that committee. Because it was historic for us to have it after five years. And I really wonder how many people in Scotland County really know that we don't use the funding formula? And we haven't used it for five years. And if things go the way they're designed, we won't use it for two more years. And I feel that it might be risky to cancel the resolution, knowing it's unfavorable. I don't like to fail. I like the success that we have using our liaison committee and reducing our funding and continuing to reduce the funding. But the school system agreeing with us that we can understand so much money. And that's where we are in that committee. I think we need to be very careful about what we're doing and about the message that we send. Because it's about process. And we're doing it on the systems hall. We're reducing school funding, and we're not using the main thing. I think that's very sinister. The school system's over budget. We're not the board of commissioners, we're not the school. Their budget is, their budget is, so I'm not understanding their frustration.
If it's not working, why do you have it?
Sir, please, this is not open to anyone.
We are responsible for our budget. And we funded school system just like one other hundred counties did. And the school system spends the money that's funded it. And that is by statute, and that is by state constitution. So I think the commissioners have done an excellent job for the last five years in communicating to our school system that we cannot continue to fund it at a mandated level. And it has gone down every year for five years. And it is scheduled to go down for the next two years. That, to me, is very significant. And I really pose the question again, how many citizens in Scotland County really know we don't use funding formula? But I know Mr. Obama, who's on.
Well, I don't think I can lend much to the conversation. But I've been around for a long time. And of course, I've talked to legislators, or I even addressed the full body in session about this issue. And I was told it's a local issue, and that was the end of it. But I do believe this. If we show good faith, as we have been doing over the last five years, and continue to work with the board of education, and gain their confidence, and I know there'll be members coming on and going off. I think we do have a shot of coming to some resolution on this issue. But if we jump ship now, I do believe, I have talked to some of the board members, not recently, but a year or so ago. And they are the mindset that if they get from under the floor, that they will end up in court having to sue us to fund them appropriately because of what some people have said. And that's where we find ourselves. So they have the upper hand now because of the school floor referendum that was passed in nineteen sixty-three. So I think we will be well served to continue the negotiation with the liaison committee and hold off on this, but don't abandon this idea because this is what we're working toward. But we do have to have five board members to agree with us. Because this board voted yesterday to get rid of the floor. So if without the school board voting, we go nowhere. We're only on track. And Tim is correct, we need to be on record as saying we are, we want to change. But the timing is not good, in my opinion. We need to hold off on this, in my opinion. Because we have next year, we were able to, the last time we were able to reduce taxes, it was because the school floor took less money. That's all we were able to do, that two cent reduction. And so we want to do it next year. And the liaison committee has negotiated right now to reduce the amount we fund for next year. And I wouldn't like to see us mess that up, because we believe we will get a reduction. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. With this resolution, my idea came up. I had Tim to overall bring this thing forward, because the liaison committee was in discussion about this same type of resolution to do away with this thing. And the last liaison meeting, we were met with, you know, we didn't sit down here and talk to y'all. And then the first thing we hear is, you're going to do a resolution. Which did make that meeting feel very good. But we are still going to talk. And we, I think, relax and get away and probably do it this year. But I think over the next year, we probably will get an agreement from the school board. It's not the end of the way with it. Because the liaison committee has been successful over the last few years. And I haven't said that, it's just, I think that the timing might have been wrong. Any more discussion?
Well, just to answer some of that back, you know, I know the liaison committee has been going, I think, five official years. They have a six-year agreement, correctly, on. And, and maybe in the next month or so, have another two years. So they're eight years into this liaison, and yet it's still sitting there with no resolution. And yet we're waiting on what the school board is going to do or how they're going to respond. And I don't think that's what we're looking here for. And I think that we make our decision based on what's best for the county. And, and the school board can make that decision based on their own and whoever's sitting there at the time that it needs to be made. We can calculate this funding now with what we're doing now. And what the school floor would actually call for this year, we're overbundling. They're getting more money this year than the school floor would got. So sure, they're going to, they're going to love to continue to do the liaison committee. And I'm not putting that all on your ball, Rick.
I'm sorry, I'm not seeing, I'm not seeing that future.
Well, and again, that goes back to the state having to get all the numbers yet because of.
Well, how have you got numbers?
Well, I'm basing it on what the state is saying against what the school is saying against what the proposed budgets were about to say. Because you've got all these calculations to do. But since the state's budget hasn't been done, you can't get an accurate number on that.
Well, that's the key word, you can't get an accurate number.
So.
One way or the other.
Right, but, but anyway, you know, we'll, if, if we do, if we make this resolution right and it doesn't go through, if it doesn't go through, then I don't think we're any good. But I still think we put that message out that, that we are ready for it now. Five years in the liaison, six-year agreement, and possibly eight years by the end of this next agreement. That, that, that's enough, that's enough time to show that we can work together and get it done. And quit being the only county in the state that doesn't have, that has to have our hand held to tell all we have to do with funding. I am not advocating a cent to be cut off that school board budget, not one. So do not take it that way. And I will not, I don't want to do that. Because I've got a little granddaughter that's going to start here next year. And I want to make sure that, that she is getting the message out there. But I go back to, I don't need the big brother to hold our hand and to force us to do it. And I sure buy that, and I'm going to make that decision on how the school board feels about it. Because if we wait for that, we'll be sitting here twenty years from now and saying the same.
Do we have a motion for? Any more questions?
We also move that this resolution, yes, and the legislature treaty for.
All right, we have a motion, introducing the resolution for a school funding formula. We have a second. I guess motion dies for the last second. All right, because we all. Awards are to be appointed.
All right. Our appointments tonight are for the eighteen advisory council. We have received a request from the chairman of that council for the reappointment. And for the sake of your time and my time, I'm not going to read all the things. But all of these people that's seen up here have been requested to be reappointed to the eighteen advisory council. I'm going to put that motion before the board.
You second question?
All right, we have a motion, and a second, to approve the board's bid on the eighteen advisory council. Any discussion?
Question, question. What does term means? Four years?
Now, they are four-year terms here. And there's not a limit to how many terms a person.
The vacant's daily lifetime.
They can stay on a long time, that's true. Because it's hard to get people to serve what I was going to say after the motion passed or failed. That there are still vacancies on this board. And we've been working for six months to get all of our four vacancies filled. We're making a little bit of progress.
Okay, that's not what I'm talking about. The term is three years, I believe it's three years.
Three-year term for the, for the, for the, for the, three-year, three-year.
But this is an active board, they do a lot, and they do a lot of work with legislature and lobby. And these people make a contribution to our county that serves on this board. And our vacancy is anybody else's intention and consent.
Have you heard the motion, and the second? All in the paper, let it go, say aye.
Aye.
For the last time.
My, it's just primarily a few updates. There is one action item at the end, which has already been discussed numerous times. First is just an update on the radio tower that will be constructed behind us. Just a calendar of what's going on. Basically, the board's being led, we're looking at construction of the tower to be, to begin construction of the foundation, laying the, laying the electrical first part or middle part in November, through the middle part of December. This tower will actually be erected probably in January. The goal is to have it complete by the end of January, at which point time will be looking to transfer over the radio equipment and install the antennas, which will take, you know, easily three weeks to do, to do that without, with minimal interruptions to radio service to emergency outbreaks. The building was already being installed. Part of this is when we do the electrical service out there, we will actually be cutting through the health department parking lot to run conduit. And when we do that, we will go back in and put in gravel until the parking lot is repaved, which will probably look to start the bidding process, the design and bidding process while the tower is being constructed. But obviously, we cannot repave the parking lot while that's going on. Because we are probably going to, other than the cutting the trench through it, the equipment that we're going to be bringing in is also going to further damage the parking lot. So we expect to do that and then dovetail that in with redoing the parking lot, the initial drive-in as well as the health department and some other areas in the remainder part of this fiscal year, the goal will be finished by then. So there will be some additional interruption out here during that period of time. Actually, the paving will cause more of an interruption than the tower erection. Because most of the tower will be done in the back, but there will be some interruption. Also, last week was the deadline for application for the Golden Leaf Community Graves Grant Initiative. And the reason why I keep talking about this, this is a project, the county did not directly apply for any of these grants. We did not have a project that would have scored well. We always have something going on, but they just did not apply to the funding purposes here. With that, in each of the ten counties that were in this prosperity zone, the county manager had to endorse any application that had go in. Only three projects can be funded out of any county, up to a total of one point five million dollars. I endorsed three projects, which happened in total of one point five million dollars. Amazing how that works out. But those were submitted actually Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday last week were the actual agencies that applied. And as well as my endorsement was sent in on Thursday. The, the actual endorsement letter is in the agenda, which talks about the different projects. Those were for St. Andrews University, Scotland County Economic Development Corporation, and the hospital. There were seven projects that applied for this project, or that they gave me their application, that they discussed with me. One of which I requested, one specifically that I requested to apply and give me the information. And then later on, I denied them the endorsement because in my communication with Golden Leaf, it would not have scored well. It was just, it would have been a great project, but it was not competitive for the money. So that's why I chose projects, some of the, there are other projects in the community that you are all aware of, that may have been better than some of the ones I endorsed. that you are all aware of, that may have been better than some of the ones I endorsed, but they were just not going to be funded. So I went for projects that were more likely to be funded.
How can you real plan for the Golden Leaf? Is it five years?
Well, this is the community, this grant application comes around about every five years, but the Golden Leaf has an open application cycle, open year after year. So just because another agency did not get funded during this, they can continue to get funded, they can continue to get, to apply, and the county is not involved in those application processes at all. But, and with that, I've also been clear that, and this was a Golden Leaf design, they specifically did not want the board commissioners involved in the selection process. That's why they gave it to the managers, and they advised managers not to take it to the commission. They wanted this to be a different process, and they have done that for the last two cycles. Also, for the last couple of weeks, I've been meeting with, out at the Wagerman Industrial Park, this is the facility that we have directly across the street from Cats Caves. This is 300 acres, that's about 150 acres of this building. But the, we have a, two ground, we have two tanks there. One is a $2 million groundwater storage tank. It's a water storage tank that sits on the ground. The other one is a half-million gallon aerial tank, that's interesting. This is the West Point Stevens Tank. That is used to provide fire protection for Cats Caves and will ultimately be used to provide fire protection for the industrial apartments out there. Because of the age of the facility, Mike McGurk, who does an excellent job, he never thought he was going to play, be a professional find the leak guy. And when you're talking about two and a half million gallons of stored water, when you have a leak, you have a very big leak. We brought in, we've had engineers, we've had industrial plumbers trying to help the facility, but we've been reached out to some engineers. We're looking to actually come in with a solution where we can cut off the aerial tank from the existing water system and actually do some more straight piping that will cover fire protection for Cats Caves and give us something that we can protect the west of the Wagerman industrial site. At this point in time, we've asked for proposals, we'll bring those back to the board and see exactly how we're going. I just want you to know, this is something that was not, that was not in our capital plan, but we've had a number of situations happen over the summer, throughout this fall, that has driven this issue even further into the forefront. So we're looking at a different solution. Also, you have received, the Board of Elections has made a recommendation for reclassification of its employees, and with that, because it came from the board, and the Board of Elections answers to that board, they don't answer to me, but I'm bringing that to this, to the commission, because it's a recommendation from an existing board.
Do you have action on it?
Well, that is up to you. First of all, it's a reclassification, so only the board commissioners can approve this. In the past, we've had other recommendations from the Board of Elections, from the Social Services Board, and from the Board of Health, looking for the adjustment salaries of their records. Generally, those recommendations have been taken to the budget process and have been worked into my budget recommendation. And that's the norm that we've had done in the past. So with that, of course, the board, it is the board's decision on what to do, but my recommendation is that we continue to go back and look at this in the budget process so we can make sure that we have something that is actually equitable and does not create other unintended consequences. Because with this, I might disagree with what the Board of Elections does, but they're looking at their department versus looking at the entire county. So with that, this would be a board's action, but if in...
So do we act? We can do two things. We could vote, if we had the motion, the second of the votes, to approve this recommendation, or we can direct you to include it in our budget retreat in February to see how it fits with our full fiscal analysis.
Yes.
Do we need action to do this second?
Because there are a number of, actually, I was having conversations with Susan Butler this afternoon, just about, we mentioned this, because she also, there was a request from a commissioner about some additional detail that was emailed out to all of you today. You have a hard copy of that information at your table also. That was a request, so it came to all of you. But we talked about some other specific positions that we were looking to target, because in the last several years, we have targeted departments, we have targeted positions that were looking for pay equity and just making sure that we have competitive workers. So we are already looking at doing some pay study lights already.
Questions? Reclassify to what? From what to what?
Basically, reclassification is increasing the grade, so basically, it is a... Yeah, it's an increase in the pay scape.
We'd be writing them another account and explaining the board's action to the board election.
Yes.
Have they ever been done before? I mean, it's like single hour. This is what it's called, is the single hour. Like you said, the whole town, board, like social board may want, social board, health board may want, I'm just saying, is that customary?
That is not, is actually not uncommon for the boards to make a request, and generally, that request goes into the budget process.
It's mine, and you can, if this didn't want to do away with part-time...
Yes, their request is, they're paying for it in their budget.
Really, why didn't they add that to the director and...
It also says, and part of that balance created would be used toward precinct officer centers, which does all...
Not very much.
I think not very much.
So the part-time person, what services they provide for the citizens...
What services the part-time person provided to the citizens of Scotland County? Most of the time, the part-time person is in the office when the rest of the office and the Board of Elections goes to mandatory training, which happens several times a year.
When they're going to be served, if this person out there, what's going to happen to our citizens when they go in to be served, when people are out of town? They're not going to be served.
Most of, well, right now, they can go off and with notice, they can actually say, we're going to be closed tomorrow for training. And the trainings are not during an election cycle. But, and they're, and actually, we have closed the office because they're going to mandatory training. And some, if they're not going to mandatory, or if they're going to the training and not the entire Board of Elections, they've actually had elections, things set in there, but...
They do occasionally have so...
And also, if it's a situation, the position does not need to be completely eliminated, so there can be, you know, we can meet the demands of meeting any required open periods. Next item is something that we've been working on internally, and this is a new, this is an item that I just failed to put in my report. Right now, SCATS is under emergency management, it's under Roiland Hammond, it's been there for a number of years, because I think before I was here, there was a meeting that either Roiland didn't, that Roiland didn't attend, or he wasn't able to back away from the table fast enough, so he wound up supervising EMS. I mean, he wound up supervising SCATS. And that's worked. However, within the last two years, on how it's funded through some of the grant cycles, it's a lot more complicated, has its own separate entity. If we move it under social services, at that point in time, then social services is technically providing Medicaid transportation rather than accounting. And since it's social services, they're not a, they're a different type of provider, so it's taking out a requirement that they, that we act as if we are a taxi service. So it would streamline some of our billing process, so we're looking to go off and consolidate transportation into social services. At this point in time, we're still working on getting, there will be some requirements that we have to do for the board to transfer the positions from one hiring authority to another. We're just not, we don't have that worked out yet.
You're not putting too much on it, probably, that re-entry with them now?
Right.
And now you're going to do that? It's not putting too much on it?
Uh, no, well, right now, they're already involved in transportation. And so, and we're not eliminating, we're not changing the people who are currently in SCATS, we're not really changing what they're doing. We're thinking that actually, there can be some efficiencies there, we're going to have finance, we're going to be more involved in some of the grant administration of the hospital. So we think it would actually improve at least the back-office function for this. So, and when we've talked about this, the SSS director has not visibly cried about this. We've had some interesting conversations about other issues, but this is not one that she expressed significant concerns about being a positive transition.
Okay, now what should we say?
And again, this won't happen, we'll come back to the board with a formal plan that you would actually need to approve before we can actually transfer.
So does it like, does it have one?
Now, this one requires action, and we just, actually, we're originally thinking about just putting it in the consent agenda, but because we've talked about it for several years now, but last month, the Board of Education officially authorized transferring Covington Street Elementary to the county commissioners, to Scotland County. So at this point in time, we're actually asking the board commissioners to do three things. First of all, to accept Covington Street, accept the property. Then we're going to ask you to deem it surplus, and then offer, then ask you to authorize its transfer by special warranty to Bridgerton Community College.
That's pretty individual.
And we do that all in one month?
I'll make that note, transferring, clearing, and connecting. A second.
One more, you can ask second.
Can I ask you one question?
Well, I'm a little late on this, because I'm looking at part of that, but, you know, is it after the fact, let's say Bridgerton Community College, they take that building, is it conveyed back to you again?
It does not. With that...
So if Longbridge, you convey it back to us?
Now, my understanding is, if a community college abandons a building, stops using it, they're, just the same way with the Board of Education, they're under a statutory obligation to offer it back to the county.
Offer it for a price or offer it? You get what I'm looking for?
Yes. So generally, it's, the statute requires it to be offered at fair market value.
So we got to buy it back, and then after you gave it?
There's no reverter, there will be no reverter clause in the statute you're talking about.
We're not retarded.
I understand that, but I mean, we have to buy it back.
The last properties that they abandoned, they offered to the county, some we rejected, others they offered to us at no cost, and then we transferred them, like the one we transferred to the city of Warner.
I believe the museum moved it down for a while, so that it looks...
All right, just the first motion, and the second.
How many seconds?
Join you at the second.
The hospital.
We have a motion and a second at the end of the transfer of Covington Street and all of the, and the second, all in favor of it, and all in thing aye?
Aye.
For the right side.
And that is all I have.
Um, I can ask you a question. Where would the register be with Covington Street? I know you say it, but I thought it's...
Right now, we have remediation going on in the building, that's remediation. And we are looking to, as soon as that's complete, we'll go into the remodel, and I think it's end of February, we've got a third, top three week for remediation, to get it started and, you know, being prepared. So we're looking end of February for construction, and during that time, we'll figure out the process of moving the facility and exactly when it is, when the best time, the best method of moving it, so registered needs is closed for the minimum length of time, and the goal would actually for it not to be closed. So it could be opened in both locations to...
Well, I say that is at issue. I suppose we'll have that department brought over to Covington Street, that we will be able to have open house, so that people can see all the changes and where it places things are located.
Now, also with that, and thank you for mentioning that, because we're actually partnering with Bridgerton Community College, they're having an open house Wednesday. So at that point in time, we're having an open house for Morgan Center as well as Covington Street Government Building. So we're inviting people, more people will be interested in the school, but we're inviting people into Morgan Center, into the county offices, as well as in the Covington Street, so we can get them in and see exactly what's going on.
So it naturally has been advertised across the...
Yes.
But long enough for people to know, to hear about it, right?
You've been in the paper.
Yeah, and this has been, yeah, a chamber event, as well as Bridgerton Community College is advertising it, and we've hosted it as well. So as well as it's been discussed in radio, discussed by radio stations, as well as in newspapers. So, but... But it starts at four o'clock Wednesday, so we're inviting people four to six. I think RCC is doing four to seven. I really don't expect that many people coming by and marveling at the wonders of the tax office for three hours, but we'll be there until seven o'clock or until we, until everybody knows. So, but everybody's not seeing it come by. We do get a lot of positive statements about, especially the mortgage center, because people remember, "Well, I visited my mother there, my grandmother there." Nobody ever visited their father there, just some female relatives. But, you know, we do get a lot of positive responses. That's it.
At this time, you can do, you know, then I, like, recognize April Snee, she has a proclamation that she wants to ring before the board.
So, November is National Adoption Month, and so, this is about Dave and Sam population. I'll have commissioners out and read that. So, whereas children are key to the county's future success, prosperity, and quality of life, and whereas all children and teens deserve a safe, loving family, and whereas adoption creates supportive, loving families for children and teens, and whereas there is always a need for parents who are willing to adopt siblings, older youth, and young people with complex medical and behavioral needs, and whereas there are numerous individuals, nonprofit organizations, and public services who are dedicated to finding families for children and teens in foster care who are waiting to be adopted, and whereas November is Adoption Awareness Month in the United States, now therefore a big claim, the Scotland County Board of Commissioners does hereby designate November 2019 as Adoption Awareness Month in Scotland County and encourage all citizens to learn more about adoption this fourth day of November 2019.
Okay. And I have a special proclamation, I'm not going to read all of it, but it's in honor of a young lady that's having her 100th birthday. Some of us in building, they're on this month. She, we tried to, and I wish she could be here tonight, but she's had a bout of pneumonia, and the doctor says she needs to stay out of the crowd. I'm not going to read the proclamation, but it's Miss Nora B. Johnson. Jim, mother, Jim, will you stand up? We just wanted to question, I actually love you. So, we're going to get her in here about her, so you can do one or two things. If she likes to open mail, you can either get it to her on her birthday, or get it to her on her birthday if you care. Come forward, I think.
I hope she will, I think.
All right, now, we have the commissioner, you, Miss Betty, do you have anything?
Two things, I believe, first, just to the, it's unusual, you have this many people here. I want to thank all of you for coming, we're better when you're here. Thank you very much. Also, Leon Giles, in your reports, you talked about return of investment. Not all of the services the county provides, can we calculate that? But I think it's good enough that we gave good money for the money we spent in the library. You've always done that, I appreciate that.
Tim?
Just wanted to say a good word about Sheriff Park, Fire Department, Rescue Squads, other surrounding counties that came over to help find the girl last week. You know, it turned out as a successful venture, which doesn't turn out that way a lot of times. You know, so, so they all did good, and see, they got off, get somebody's whole individual name or 98, but it was a good, good, it turned out, had a good turnout. There is something that came out of that, but we're going to call play long talk. I would do a lot now, because he called, I was there anyway. The radio, that he ran the first, is going to have to be. It's a shame when a guy from Rosewood County can stand out there like San Antonio and talk to his bachelor in Wilmington, and the sheriff can't talk to the nine no one's center.
That's something that's been.
I know what you're talking about, but I know, but we're going to cross that. But I also think we need to kind of wait to see how the hours, it's all hours.
And like you say, the creek, I have a road path, we're not, not very far. The fear was that that's where she was.
That's where the dog tracks him from, at first.
You guys?
Got it.
John?
I just want to say, I'm glad to sell the folk here tonight, especially my buddies from Longview.
Again, thank y'all for being here, we appreciate it.